Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. We only have one topic of discussion this afternoon, which is probably a good thing, and that is the 2045 comprehensive plan update. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council.
There we go. The Planning Commission at their June 18 meeting received an update by staff on the proposed 2045 comprehensive plan. That briefing was followed up yesterday after July Planning Commission meeting with another plan overview, a public hearing, and a recommendation by the commission to move the proposed plan to City Council at your August meeting for council's consideration. The Planning Commission recommendation was provided with a seven-one vote recommending approval of the plan. Today, City Council received an overview of the plan similar to the June 18 presentation to the Planning Commission. City Council may want to hold questions on the presentation till the end to allow a smooth flow of this if you desire so. At this time, I will ask, and Keith is there for me already, Kenny, to come to lead to the podium and lead the presentation. Keith?
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Damon and Members of Council. It's been a couple of months since we last brief you on this project at your joint work session with the Planning Commission back on May 1st. So as the managers as indicated, we're taking this opportunity to bring you up to date as we move through the steps of adopting this plan. We'll also use this as an opportunity to once again make the case for Suffolk 2045. What's compelling about this plan? Why do we need to adopt this plan now? Joining me this afternoon, as noted, are a couple of staff members who've been very instrumental in getting us to this point. So we really want to make a strong case today for where we are, how we got here, and the reasons for going forward. Again, I think it's appropriate to share this graphic, which we've got a lot of mileage out of during this project, mostly to look back and be reminded of the time and effort that's been committed to completing this project. That includes this council, includes the Planning Commission, the community, and staff and consultants to get us to this point. Roughly a two-and-a-half-year process, significant commitment of time and resources. And also, I think, worth pointing out, and an image that this slide displays, which this is a step-by-step process. It has a beginning, it has a middle, and it has an end, all leading up to this point where we are increasingly getting close to those dates today. So I want to start out touching on a couple of key items for you, again, looking back a little bit about what did we set out to do two-and-a-half years ago? Are we meeting that mark? And what are some of the guiding values that we followed along the way? I want to give you some fairly specific reports on what we've done since that May joint meeting. We've made some changes. We realize there's some things we need to provide some additional detail for you on, and we'll do that this afternoon as well. As I mentioned, this is an update to the 2035 plan. We think one of the effective ways to think about this right now and going forward with this plan is to do a comparison with 2035. You know, what's new with this document that wouldn't be possible with the current plan? And what also are we building on? Some of the traditions that have been in play for quite a few years. This is actually the fourth iteration of a plan like this for Suffolk. And then we'll talk a little bit about moving forward. This plan sets out some specific actions that we would like to get to work on, some priorities, recommendations are identified, and then finally talk about where we are in the adoption process so far and the dates that are coming forward. So again, kind of a review for everyone, but important to realize, this is a requirement for all cities, counties, and towns in Virginia. They ask that you look at this every five years and update the plan going forward. I had to double-check the date on this, but the current plan was actually adopted in April of 2015, so nine years plus on that document, and we believe a time to consider this review and this update. The state code says a lot about the comprehensive plan, but a couple of things are really, really clear. This is general in nature. It's not specific about certain areas in the city or certain things that the city has to do. It attempts to coordinate future development of the whole city and to think about that in coordination with your infrastructure and your services going forward. So really, a plan for the physical development of the city. That's what we set out to do back when we kicked off this effort. Again, I like to remind everyone that we are very fortunate in Suffolk to have a set of guiding values to drive this planning effort. We don't have to reinvent the wheel about these principles. They've been very consistent over the last four plans. So that's remarkable for us and very, very important as we move forward. They touch on some key themes. The other thing I think to notice here is some of these themes are in conflict with each other, if you think about them in isolation. So one of the challenges for the community throughout this process is to find balance in these, and again, getting back at that overall purpose of a general plan for future development. So we care about the character of development. Clearly, transportation is a key issue for us, realizing that economic development opportunities are very important for the long-term growth of the community, even more so today perhaps than earlier plans. Striving to provide a diverse stock of housing is very, very important. Suffolk continues to have very valuable natural, cultural, and historical assets that we need to understand and protect going forward. Again, this question of coordinating with services and facilities still has a very proud and deep agricultural heritage that we have to keep in mind. And of course, remember that we're not an island. We're very much a part of a growing region. It drives a lot of key issues for us, economic development, transportation, just as an example. So those guiding values are very much a driver for this, and I think you'll see that popping up as we go through. As I mentioned, I would like to dig into a little bit of detail on responses to our conversation on May 1st together with the Planning Commission. We saw four key things that we think we want to talk about with you all today and that we've been in conversation with the Planning Commission. Clearly, we're hearing some pressure around the size of the growth area boundary expansion that we're recommending, so we'll talk about that. We heard some concerns about the village area plans, which I think there's a lot of agreement on the need to update those. There's some concerns among the villages on the peninsula in Suffolk about a particular issue around the type of commercial development that is happening or potentially happening in these villages, so we've made some changes that we want to present to you as well. Again, we've said over and over, traffic is just a huge issue for any growing community in Virginia, including us. We've recommended a transportation master plan for the first time be undertaken by the city. We'll talk a little bit about some language we've developed specifically to get that going. It's a little bit of a joke, but we heard a lot about the purple on the map, you know, at the work session. So that's the employment center use that we're recommending as part of our future land use plans. I want to unpack that a little bit and describe what that looks like and what we're recommending there for going forward. And again, I'll get some help on that one from Kevin Hughes in Economic Development in the City Manager's Office. So let's talk a little bit about the growth area boundaries. Again, I'm going to move through this fairly quickly, but I've got a couple of key points that I want to make. So back in February, we identified some optional areas that we could think about, should think about, for expansion of the growth area boundary. There were five options actually put on the table at that time. Again, we heard pretty clear from the community that perhaps that was too much at one time. So we went back and looked at making some changes. This is the May draft that was presented to council, and if you all remember, we really narrowed this down to two major areas. One is to connect the northern growth area with the central growth area, and the other is to expand out the 460 corridor to the olive-white city-county line. So what we are currently recommending, and this is the June version that you see here, is to further reduce that area that was proposed for the 460 expansion. So you'll see that that is reduced. And I want to share a couple of numbers with you by way of comparison. So what we're currently proposing right now is about 5,900 acres of expansion of the growth area boundary. Just for a comparison, in 2015, when the growth area was expanded, that was 2,300 acres. In 20, I think I've got the wrong date here. In 20, the first expansion, this is the fourth one, the first plan, was 5,600 acres. So again, we're in the ballpark with those earlier expansions with the growth area boundary that we're currently recommending. This is about a 46% reduction of the proposal that we originally submitted. Okay, so just to give you some order of magnitude kind of numbers there, reduced it by about half, and it's now comparable to the earlier expansions that the city took forward. So pretty big change there that we want everyone to be aware of since our conversation back in May 1st. I also mentioned that we heard some feedback about our plan, our recommendation to update the village area plans throughout the city. We've gone back in and added this language. You'll find it on page 67 of the draft. This addresses specifically the concerns about on the peninsula area of the city around sort of today's larger-scale commercial development with gas pump, your big footprint, a lot of activity, extended hours of operation, very common on major corridors throughout Hampton Roads in the state, concern that in some villages, that's just too much. It's permitted under B-2 zoning. One of the objectives in updating these village plans is to find out if that's the right land use for that village, to work together with property owners and in that community to evaluate that and make that part of that plan update. So we wanted to make sure that that would be one of the considerations in that planning process. So that change has been made as a result of the work session. So that language is there to be looked at. We also, again, continue to hear that a transportation master plan is a good idea. What do we mean by that? So we added the language here that you'll find on page 100 of the plan. Again, I think it's inappropriate for this plan to scope out what that looks like. That's going to require a lot of good participation from folks within the city and in the community. But this, again, lays a little bit more of a framework together for what we think that plan will do and why we think it's so important. So that's a change that you'll see in the document as well. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about the future land use plan and specifically the employment centers category. This is the large footprint logistics, manufacturing types of uses that you see in the city and that are potential opportunities for the city going forward. I want to take a closer look at the map and show you what's on the map now for future land use for employment centers. We're going to talk a little bit about recent economic development trends in that area and give you a little bit of a history on how we've gotten to where we are with that. And we're also recommending some language to the definition of employment centers to give that a little more flexibility, so we aren't so constrained in how we apply that when this plan is updated. So I want to pick the two areas apart just to give you a little bit more detail. This is the proposed growth area boundary and land use category for the northern Suffolk growth area. And again, you'll see the purple there at the bottom of the slide. That's essentially the North Gate Commerce Park. That's what that is. We're looking at existing land use and existing zoning when we develop that category, so that's what you'll see on the map for that district. So now, looking at the central growth area, again, you've got some large areas of concentrated employment center uses, so I want to kind of walk you through the map real quick, and I think you'll recognize the areas that are designated this way. So starting in the upper right-hand corner, you all are familiar with the Willroy Road Industrial Park. That's one of the big chunks of purple up there, fully developed. We'll talk about that in a little bit. If you go clockwise to your right and south, what you'll see there is the SIPSA regional landfill, again, a really, really big property with that kind of industrial zoning. And near that, sort of across the street, are the collection of auto junkyards, again, fully developed. They've got that kind of zoning as well. Again, coming down now south and back west, what you see in purple is the Carolina Road, Dill Road industrial area of Suffolk, again, largely developed. And you also notice the Suffolk Executive Airport, again, another big property that has that kind of zoning in that area as well. So now, moving, again, sort of clockwise up to the left and north, you'll see the Center Point Commerce Park. We'll talk about that a little bit, how that has developed over the years as hoped for. And then, again, looking up clockwise, you'll see another large purple area, which is the Port 460 Commerce Park as well, so recently rezoned and in the process of being developed. Then immediately to your left of that is a new area that we're proposing for that designation in the 460 corridor. So if you look at the total area that's covered by purple on this future land use map, you'll find that 86% of it is currently developed and is within the existing growth area boundary. So what we're recommending is about 14% of that total land area. That would be future development for that kind of use on Route 460. So went through that, just to kind of give you a sense, again, a good catch by you all and others at that meeting, let's unpack that a little bit and talk about what that actually looks like and what we're proposing. At this point, I think Kevin Hughes is going to come up and talk a little bit about those individual parks and how they've developed over the years.
Thank you, Keith. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager. So to walk you through just a few samples of the evolution of industrial development in the city, we'll start out at Willroy Industrial Park, a very successful completed park off of Willroy and Nansman Parkway. It's really a testament of what we want to aim for with some recommendations in this plan that maybe didn't exist in the other, and that's a diverse use in here. The history of it included the Economic Development Authority, or the IDA at the time, Industrial Development Authority, and the city of Suffolk serving as the developer. So we were bringing local funds to encourage infrastructure and then projects, and it's been very successful, the 58 bypass assisted as well, but it's a great mixture of food processing, some small manufacturing, and then some distribution in that park. And so that's kind of a great model that sets the tone for this city. The world really changed for us in 2010 with private developers coming into the area and identifying properties that they thought would work well for industrial development as well. And so around 2007, 2008, Center Point McDonald Development came in, identified 58. The Target Center was already there, so there was some reason to gravitate towards that area. But it really took a while to catch fire and gain some traction, and so this photo shows 2016. And to be frank with you, if this is what it looked like in 2024, we would not be talking about new purple, so to speak. And so we saw a little bit of success back in 2016. Basically, we'd see a new user come in, and we would be successful in landing them about once every year and a half, and they'd be about 350,000 square feet. So you can see the five buildings that existed in 2016. Fast-forwarding to 2024, it's a much different story. I think it's 14 buildings in total. And so Center Point, now Equus, and now is the Virginia Port Logistics Center, has one large site available for development. McDonald, which controls both orange and red, has two sites that are available for future development, as these have found users that have come into place. There's a little bit of manufacturing or assembly in here, but for the most part, they're distribution operations. They all operate a little bit differently, have different customers. Some really involve as import centers going to other distribution centers, some going directly to customers, some doing e-commerce. And so there's some nuance in there that has different impacts and different employment centers with that. And so there is a little bit of a difference in theirs, but mainly distribution nonetheless. Jumping up in North Gate off of Nansman Parkway and Shoulders Hill Road, Keith was touching on this, on the left-hand side is a 2016 photo, and you can see a lot of undeveloped property in there. For the longest period of time, it was kind of Wonchies and Suffolk Cold Storage. Saw a little bit of success with some smaller users, and then after the Amazon project came in, and also the Shoulders Hill, I'm sorry, the Nansman Parkway Road widening project really began to change the world up there. And so North Gate Commerce Park is also sold out. You may be able to make out some projects or some sites that are under construction there to show that sold-out area. One of the things that we're making a recommendation in this plan that didn't exist in previous plans is something like North Gate as well as Willroy, the opportunity to really take some consideration to control property. A great example for us is North Gate Commerce Park. And so the IDA controlled 37 acres towards the tail end of it off of Industrial Drive, and there were a number of users that wanted to build distribution, mainly operations there, developer-driven. And we told a lot of folks no, essentially. We were able to identify municipal uses, so VDOT is owner of 30 acres there, and then our Public Works Department's going to move off of Lone Star Lakes eventually and relocate the Zone C operation. So not your typical economic development move, but nonetheless, the municipality working with the IDA, making land use choices versus just a developer model, what we saw at Center Point. Willroy Industrial Park, similarly, we were able to say yes and no as we need to, and it's something we do at Obese Place or at the 55 acres at the Point at Harborview. And so we think that's a consideration that we really need to think really hard about in the future with some of these future locations. Finally, just wanted to bring some numbers to you as well. And so you just want to make sure, as we're seeing development opportunities, that it represents jobs, it also represents positive growth in those jobs. And so you can see, again, using 16 and 23 as your benchmarks, we're at a little over 29,000 people employed in the city. We're now at 35. And then the wages were also increased from 46 to 60,000. So just want to make sure that we're not plateauing or seeing a decline, even though we're seeing development. Keith?
Okay, well, thanks, Kevin. And the other thing I think that hopefully helps us do...
And so we think that's a consideration that we really need to think really hard about in the future with some of these future locations. Finally, just wanted to bring some numbers to you as well. And so you just want to make sure as we're seeing development opportunities that it represents jobs, it also represents positive growth in those jobs. And so you can see, again, using 16 and 23 as your benchmarks, we're at a little over 29,000 people employed in the city. We're now at 35. And then the wages were also increased from 46 to 60,000. So just want to make sure that we're not plateauing or seeing a decline, even though we're seeing development.
Okay. Well, thanks, Kevin. And the other thing I think that hopefully helps us do is connect the conversation about a growth area boundary expansion and the land use plan to the type of economic development we want to do over time. So this is really kind of the first step in making those developments happen and capturing the benefits that come with that, net revenue, jobs, balance of land uses going forward. So that's how these pieces fit together. And again, why this particular time to change the plan is so important. So one of the other challenges with the Future Land Use Plan is being too specific or too general in your definition of land uses. And so we're always looking for ways to make sure we hit the sweet spot there. You want to be predictable about what's going to develop in your neighborhood or around the corner, but you don't want to be so narrow that you limit good opportunities coming along. Right? So one of the things we heard about the employment centers, well, maybe it's a little bit too narrow. What if you need to repurpose those buildings going forward and you're stuck with the narrow definition of employment center? So we went in and we added this secondary use language that you see here on this slide in this intent language to give council, planning commission, the community a little more flexibility if down the road it was necessary to repurpose these buildings. Talk about what that looks like, what are some of the categories that would have benefits for the community so we're not so narrowly defined and don't have that policy guidance going forward. So you'll find that as a change, again, coming out of the May 1 joint work session on page 50. So that's the conversation that we thought was important to have today on sort of what's changed since that May 1 session. I want to move on a little bit now to, again, this sort of side-by-side comparison of the 2045. Bottom line, what's the compelling reason for going forward with this? And so I've got this one category, which is, okay, what's new? What's new about 2045 that we don't have in 2035? And these are just a couple of examples that I think are worth noting. And I think you'll recognize these, but I want to provide a little bit of detail here. So community engagement is clearly one of those. The development opportunities which we're talking about are different now than they were then. The importance of preserving agricultural land, we treat that differently in this plan than before. And of course, as we're talking about, we take a whole new approach to the Future Land Use Plan, showing different categories of land uses. So again, a couple of ways, just to kind of pause and think about how different this public engagement process was, this is a slide that I've used over the last several months, just identifying the types of engagement we made a part of this process, from focus groups to ongoing steering committee, a number of meetings out in the community, traditional kinds of meetings, and even untraditional meetings where we're there mostly listening, kind of in an open house type of a format, a project website, any number of things that we've been doing to keep the public engaged in this process, including taking three different opportunities to pause and change the scope and schedule of our project, to make sure that we were getting the word out about what was going on, what are the important issues, what are we going to be proposing in this process. Again, so four rounds of community engagement, which we really scoped to, which some people may have thought was too many, and probably was more than the previous plan. So a big effort there to get the word out. Here are a couple of numbers, just to give you an idea of the participation that happened there. So again, community engagement, one of those four. Development opportunities, we all know that Suffolk is at the top of the list or near the top of the list in population growth when you compare us to other communities. So that's clearly an important issue for us. We've been growing, probably growing faster now than we've had, been growing in a long time. The huge investment in the expansion of the Port of Virginia had reached its culmination, right, since the last update. Major driver of economic development opportunities in this region and across the state, that's new. That's something for us to think about. And maybe a smaller one, but particularly impactful for the rural portion of Suffolk, we've created a market for utility-scale solar that wasn't there before. And we're seeing the evidence of that right now in our community and around the state. So we really needed to respond to those development opportunities. They were new, right? And they're a major effect on the things that we talk about in the plan. So we've talked about the growth area boundary changes here. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the benefits that come from that. As we've talked about here before, job creation opportunities, net revenue to pay for city services, and things like that are what come from. Being smart about taking advantage of those growth opportunities. Some different things are being talked about and recommended in this plan when it comes to preserving agricultural land. We actually have an active agricultural advisory committee now. Our department staffs that group. We have in the budget now a full-time position to carry this initiative forward. And this plan makes specific action items. Not that it's our job to write the job description for this position or for this work going forward, but these recommendations actually came from the agricultural advisory committee. So this plan says that as a matter of city policy, and that's new information. So I won't go through all these in detail, but they're in the plan. They talk about the important issues for making some headway on this important priority going forward. So no changes here, but I want to just make sure that everybody is aware that that's in there now, and that isn't part of the 2035 plan. Talked a little bit about a whole new look when it comes to our Future Land Use Plan and really all the benefits that come from that. The bottom line is predictability. You know, investors know, the community knows a little bit more about how the land in the city is going to be developed going forward. So that was changing the limited number of categories into a few more that give us more predictability and control going forward. So those are some of the new things. I want to talk now about where we're building on some of the traditions that were started by earlier plans, earlier planning commissions and councils. And I think we continue to recognize this notion of focused growth or smart growth. It's a good strategy for Suffolk going forward. This plan builds on that by making some changes. And just a recognition that we're just a really, really diverse community. We've got new suburban development, we've got older urban development in a really, really large rural community, and we have to make all that work. We recognize that, and this plan makes recommendations in those areas. We also continue to have things that make us really attractive. Those are the things that are special in the city. We need to know what they are, and we need to make recommendations to make sure that those are preserved. And again, I'll get some help on this in today's presentation, but it's important that we invest in this growth and in these areas that we're identifying, and we're going to share some examples with that with you as well. Lots of ways to talk about how diverse Suffolk is. We kind of landed on this pie chart, and I'll give you, again, the high-level numbers here. This is, the colors on the Future Land Use Map, if we grew out, as that land use map predicts that we do, 83% of the land area in Suffolk would be rural or open space. That's a really large percentage, so we'd still have that diversity, that rural character in our community, while the remaining, about 17%, would be urban and suburban. So we're still going to be that really, really diverse community, and the challenges and the benefits that come along with that will still very much be in play. So what are we building on? Again, we talked quite a bit about this, preserving what's special. We talked about the agricultural land preservation recommendations that we made here. We talked about the recommendation and some funding to get started on, updates to the Village Plan. We know the UDO, the Urban Development Ordinance, is dated. We need to make some changes. This plan identifies the priority amendments that we need to undertake there as well. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to a couple of our department heads who have been particularly important in supporting this effort so far and are busy at the work of investing in the growth and change that we're seeing going forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Mark Furlough. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. So we use the comprehensive plan to help guide us in investment in our capital infrastructure. You can see there's a picture up here of three of our standalone recreation center, and you'll notice two of those are located in the growth area. And also, when you think about our regional parks, take Lake Mead, for instance. When I started here back in 2001, Lake Mead was nothing more than a tennis center. Now it has a playground, trails, a dog park, a skate park, and that's one of our regional parks that's located in the growth center. And if you think about our other Bennett's Creek Park, which is another one located in one of our growth centers, we've made similar investments in infrastructure in that park as well. This is the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail. Currently, we've got 6.3 miles built, another 6.3 miles currently under design, and then about six miles yet to build. And this is not only a regional trail that connects us with other regions of South Hampton Roads, it's also going to connect the two growth areas, the northern and central growth And if you look at what we have coming on the horizon, we're doing investments at Lone Star Lakes Parks with the new interpretive center, a new boat ramp on the Nansman River, the Driver Sports Complex, a recreation center in the downtown area, in the Holy Neck area, and then an aquatic facility. And it's Gary Jones of Capital Projects will be talking about some of the other projects we have going on.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and welcome back, Mr. Manager. Continuing with our city investments, I'm going to start off by saying, this is not the one I was going to talk about, but I'll talk about it anyway. I had more construction pictures up here I wanted to show you. I've talked a lot about these renderings here, but I'll talk about it, but I want to talk more about the construction that's going on. Starting with the first one in the upper left-hand corner, the Downtown Festival Park. As you've been seeing over the last six months, as this has been under construction, you've seen this beautiful park come out of what used to be an old furniture store site and office building. We were lucky enough to be able to get our hands on that property after a storm, a tornado touchdown in downtown in 2020, and able to convert this property into one of our major initiatives in our downtown plan for green spaces, the Downtown Festival Park. This 1.9-acre site will be the home to many of our venues that we currently have in the city, events such as the Parks and Rec TGIF series, holiday events. But for most of the time, it will be a typical open green space park that will enhance the day-to-day lives of our citizens. This $2.5 million investment is going to get us a lot of bang for the buck. I can't think of a better investment. And to get so much out of $2.5 million, then we'll see in this park, this downtown park. The next one, right under it, the Central Library, as you know, I've been talking about this one for a very long time, that one is now under construction, as you've seen on Washington Street. This is a $25.1 million city investment to construct this new central library that will be 38,000 square feet and two stories in height. Between this site and the site I previously mentioned, we'll be adding another 82 parking spaces in the downtown parking inventory, about 41 spaces in the park and about 41 spaces at the place at the library site. The library will be constructed for the next 16 or so months and be ready for use and operational in November of 2025. JFK Middle School, which is also under construction, is the replacement school for the existing John F. K. Middle School. The total investment on this one is $75 million. It is a 122,000-square-foot facility, which consists of three buildings, the main building being the school itself of about 94,000 square feet. And the two outbuildings will be buildings to house the school's CSEP program, which is their special needs education program, as well as their IT and technology department in the separate building. Each one of those buildings being about 14,000 square feet in size. The site also will have athletic fields that will be jointly used by our Parks and Recreation Department. So we'll get new fields to go along with that that'll be used by Parks and Recreation. The next one in the bottom right-hand corner is Fire Station 11 Construction, which is currently under construction in Harborview, Hampton Roads Parkway. This 21,000-square-foot four-base station represents a $12.1 million investment to meet the needs of our very fast-growing northern Suffolk part of the city. As you know, we currently have Station 5 and Precinct 2 there already. Station 5, which is about less than two miles away from the site, just can't keep up with the growth. So this is going to supplement the much-needed services that the new growth is bringing. Moving on to some future projects that's coming, this is just a sample of some of those, by far not all of those. This first one I'll talk about, I'll actually slide it into the active category because as of about a week ago, we actually started construction of the fire training burn building down at our Carolina Road Operations Complex site. This represents a new training facility for our fire and rescue department. This is the first phase of a multi-phase training site. This particular building is the burn building, which is 8,500 square feet in size, four stories, which allows them to do a multitude of various training, everything from obviously burn training, but also they can do repelling training, they can do manhole recovery training, and many other exercises that allow them to perform their duties at a high level. I'll touch on some other school projects that are coming here in the near future, and starting with some of our capacity projects, which will address some of the capacity needs at some of these schools, starting with Northern Shores and Nansman High School. Those both will be expanded to meet the growth of those populations in those schools. And then there's some replacement schools that are coming up in our CIP in the future to replace schools that have either antiquated, infrastructure is in bad shape, or they're simply aged out and can't meet the programmatic needs of the modern curriculum of Suffolk public schools. Those are Elephants Fork Elementary, Kilby Shores Elementary, Forest Glen Middle School, Nansman Parkway Elementary, and Johnny Yates Middle School. We're also doing continuous upgrades at the Godwin Courthouse. We've been doing upgrades there since about 2023, and this is to upgrade all the building's main systems, starting with, back in 2023 and 24, we replaced the roof, we replaced a lot of HVAC equipment, made major upgrades to the security system inside and out. And we've also started and completed some of our elevator modernizations. We have five elevators in that building, two public and three in the secure areas. We've upgraded three of those, the two public elevators and one of the secure elevators, at a tune of about $200,000 each. Obviously, in the courthouse, we can't shut that courthouse down and just do renovations all at one time. We have to do them in very small chunks and keep that building completely operational. We'll be continuing to do upgrades in that building for the next three years or so. And then finally, last but not least, is our police training facility down in Whelleville. The old Whelleville Community Center has become the police department's training site. It's the old 8,000-square-foot, the old school building that used to be the community center. They've been in there for about a year and a half training, and the first leg we put in for them was just the training simulator. We'll be sitting down the next couple of months designing the rest of the build-out of that facility to house some of their administrative needs, as well as some of the additional training needs. We'll also be providing space on the exterior for the K-9 training. So this is going to be a very valuable site to the police and their training needs. With that, I'm going to bring Mr. Paul Rattell up to talk about public utilities.
Thank you, Gary. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager. As a side note, Gary was talking about the library project, just a little bit of a rabbit trail we completed Sunday night, worked through the night with a contractor, actually cut in the tea on a very old water main to supply water to the new library, so it's all set up for that when that's needed. So good working with Gary. So good working with Gary and his department on that. So we talk about smart growth, and we pivot from some of Gary's projects to public utilities. One of the, we talk about smart growth, we're talking about really a key word here is balance. We're talking about balance really in a couple different ways. One is to balance system improvement costs with, while minimizing rate impacts. What I mean by that is not building ahead of ourselves, but building conjunction with the growth to make sure we don't overbuild, get ahead of ourselves. Great example of this on the second bullet is balancing construction timing with water quality, especially when we think about water transmission mains, large diameter water piping. Don't want to build that too far in advance and have that charge with water where the water would age. Water age is not a friend to water, as that disinfectant level declines, we don't want to see that. So we try to balance that out and time our projects. So we've got a couple things on our next slide, we're gonna talk about some of our larger efforts, our larger planning efforts with water transmission mains and our water plant, is trying to balance the timing of that with the need for that. So we do recognize that development does drive system expansion, most definitely, and one of the benefits of that is the revenue that we do gain, in particular, from the availability, water and sewer availability charges. It assists with that, assists with that in several different ways. One is it actually assists us with the improvement funding, the various improvements within the system, as well as paying down debt from prior projects, and also it's more favorable to rates, to, as we budget, in our operating budget for our yearly utility rates, more connections is better for, more favorable impacts on our rates. So a great illustration of this, as I mentioned, is on the availability charges for both water and sewer. So for example, we budget that on an ERU basis in all of our, in our annual operating budget. So ERU, think of an equivalent residential unit, that's what it stands for, think of a home. So we try to project out the revenue that we think that we may be able to gain from development and from the addition of connections, ERUs to our system. So if you look at a very simple example, if you take the revenue that we gained from 100 ERUs, so if we budgeted and gained 100 new connections, that would be about $1.1 million, but then if we budgeted 550 ERUs, we'd be up at 6.3. So you see the difference there, that $5.2 million, very favorable to us as far as being able to fund improvements, pay down debt, and to also mitigate rate increases in our operating budget. So moving on, as we talk about balancing infrastructure with growth, three of the, three good illustrations of this is the expansion of our G. Robert House Water Treatment Plant, that's the city-owned water treatment plant up in Chukatuck. Right now, we're talking, I just had a meeting last week about an expansion, looking at a 5 million gallon a day expansion to that plant. These projects that are listed here, these are pricey projects, so we're looking at the, taking a hard look at what we can do to keep those costs down, so that would be an expensive project. Then looking at the Southern Water Transmission Main, that's a water transmission pipeline project that will come down from the Chukatuck Plant, the G. Robert House Plant, down to Route 460, and then Route 460 Water Transmission Main would be a large diameter main extending out from the city of Suffolk, out 460 to Isle of Wight and serving any development along that pipeline. So again, three good illustrations of projects, pricey projects, but projects that we're looking to mitigate cost impacts and time the construction with when we actually need the service. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Robert.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. We would be remiss to talk about transportation, we'll talk about growth without talking about transportation. That is probably one of the hottest and most contested issues anytime we talk about growth in our city. One of the things we look at is we always look at where's the need for transportation? Everybody has an opinion on transportation and where we need to build transportation, but where can we document that? So the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, the TPO, does a number of studies for us annually, biannually, and they look at this, and they actually document what we call recurring congestion. We actually selected the afternoon slide for this, because this is the worst-case scenario, and as you can see, the cities to the east of us have quite a bit of red and yellow on there, but when you look in Suffolk, you do see some red and yellow starting to pop up in a few places around there. What's really interesting is if you look at where that congestion is starting to show, that's where our growth is showing, that's where we're growing inside of our boundary, that's where the needs are. Why is that important? Because again, in today's world, one of the things we have to do is we have to compete for transportation money, and that means oftentimes that we have to be out there against the bigger cities to our east and others in the Commonwealth who also have transportation needs. So what you see on this map is a number of green dots, those are where a lot of our CIP projects that we currently have underway are occurring, and again, you'll notice a lot of those actually coincide with the congestion that we're experiencing in our city today and we're seeing in the near future. So again, the planning of this comes into play as we go out and compete. I've noted before, one of the really interesting things to keep in mind as we go after transportation funding, is in the Commonwealth of Virginia today, and especially in the Hampton Roads region, the most important factor that weighs into our scoring to see if we're gonna be able to be successful in obtaining money, it's congestion. If there's no congestion, it's extremely difficult to get money dedicated to a project. So it's kind of a catch-22. You had to have a need to get some money to fix it, and you get some money to fix it, and then the need goes away and it's not as easy to get it in the future, but the need is gonna continue as we grow. I would also like to just take a moment and talk about, when we talk about transportation, so often we zero in on traffic. We talk about cars, we talk about trucks and those types of things, but transportation is so much. You've seen another, a lot of other projects today that have fallen under Parks and Recreation and some of these other facilities. When we talk about improving pedestrian facilities, when we talk about improving bicycle facilities, all of that is part of the transportation network in our city. One of the things we don't spend a lot of time talking about is our public transit, and again, public transit is driven by these same scenarios as we go after funding. So again, all of this plays in. We talk, we're already talking a lot about trains and the fact of trying to get a train back, so again, growth and the need for trains is one of the things that's gonna help us as we drive forward to try to get a train station in our city again on the Amtrak line. All of this plays into it, and again, we use this in our planning. And with that, Keith?
Thank you, Robert. Again, getting back to the comparison that we're talking about this afternoon, this is just another example how the 2045 plan, the draft plan, builds on earlier work. It's building on that plan, infrastructure, these kinds of services are long-term investments in the city, has been doing this kind of coordination through this whole series of plans, and this plan continues that process going forward. So this is kind of a summary of some of the things we've been talking about today in terms of just a bottom-line recommendation for moving forward, the new approach to future land use, building that transparency and predictability, taking a strategic approach to expanding the growth area boundaries while protecting some of the things that make Suffolk special, focusing on and moving forward the update of the downtown plan and the village area plans, and establishing some critical properties around some priorities that came out of this effort around affordable housing and agricultural preservation. So again, this plan includes a section that is very specific about action items going forward in a number of areas that, most of which we've talked about in this presentation. So let me just finish our presentation today by identifying some key dates, what we've been doing since back in May. We had a similar work session with the Planning Commission on June 18th. We published the draft plan that following day, so it's been out for folks to look at since that time. As the manager mentioned, we had a public hearing with the Planning Commission yesterday, and they have voted to send this on with a recommendation for approval to City Council, and we are working towards your August date, August 21st, for a public hearing for action by this body. So again, thank you all for the time this afternoon, and we're happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information that you might want from us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you to all the other presenters. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Why do I have to go first? Oh, my God. Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it. Keith and everybody on staff that have come up and give presentations today, just a couple of notes, I just wanna just throw some things out here. Talk about a transportation master plan, and I think we're on the right target with that. I think that that's a paramount thing that we need to be sure that we're really doing a deep dive on, so that as we grow in the future, we can meet that demand with that transportation plan, whether it be rail, roadways, whatever the case might be. I was glad to see the employment centers, kind of, you kind of adjusted, listening to us on that a little bit versus, you know, other properties around it, such as where are we gonna house people in the employment centers? We could build big places, but where are we gonna put them? So that's a thing that I was, I was nice to see that we were doing something with that. Let me just get through here. Just flipping through and made some notes. You know, I realize that we, right now, are doing a number of transportation corrections right now that may incorporate already some of these areas of growth, so that we have a plethora, a number of road construction issues going on. I think Robert Lewis briefed us not long ago on that, and I think that kind of is setting the tone a little bit, so we've got a lot of investment going there. As we move to 460, I mean, there's a lot of talk about what we're gonna do on 460 other than Port 460, from that location down to the Isle of Wight Line, which is a futuristic, there's some discussion on that, and that brings a little more challenge to us in some ways to do that growth area. However, there is people talking about it already, what is it 460 gonna look like? We are fortunate enough yesterday to get, you know, the $30 million to help us start the process to get the information driven, to get that roadway correction done at 58 and 460, so, you know, that's a, that's a big win for us, a big win. When you're talking $80 million project or whatever, 86 million, and then you got 30 million of it, you're starting to inch toward home so that we'll be able to make that transportation correction as we move forward. And I'm not gonna take too much time, because I know other people have probably some comments, but I didn't want to miss some things. All the amenities that we're making and have made, such as library and rec centers and a new fire station, very paramount things that we need. You know, I, thank Gary, I hopped on him right much on my four bays, that's the way of the future. So anyway, I appreciate him getting to that point. You know, we do hear a lot about traffic congestion and traffic issues, and Robert, you have it in here, you have a diagram of the high-impact times of the day, the worst of the day, which is early morning and late in the afternoon, of course, and that only puts us in a bind when we have a mishap along the way, where a major roadway artery is shut down for whatever reason. So all these are gonna play into this plan. I think that this plan is a good plan. I mean, this is good, and, you know, I take a look at all the areas that we went to and had, you know, work sessions and open houses and all the different opportunities folks had to input into this. You know, some people may say, well, you know, you didn't put in there what I wanted, or you didn't listen to what I had to say, or... But at the end of the day, this is a good, it's a plan, which is a working document, of course, and I think the UDO definitely needs some work, number one, and I'm glad we're gonna take a deep dive a little bit into the village areas, because I think they need some work and some corrections in that area, too, so... I mean, all in all, I just want to say thank you for the hard work and the dedication you put into this, everybody that was involved in this, because this took a whole lot of people over the last couple of years to get off the ground and get this thing going. Is it perfect? Nope, it's not perfect. Is it gonna be perfect? Probably not, but we're gonna continue to work in progression to make it better and better and better as we move forward in this city over the next empty ump years, whatever how long it takes, because the next five years is gonna come up again.
Yeah.
We'll get another review. So we do this drawl over again, so there may be some differences then to take care of. But anyway, I'm not gonna take everybody's time up. I do appreciate all the work, congratulate everybody on it, I'm looking forward to getting this on the table so that we can get this document going and move on to the next item that we gotta take care of. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butler-Barley?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Keith. I really appreciate the update, very clear information and like some of the changes. I do want to ask a couple of questions, so, well, first of all, I want to say I really, really appreciate the amount of attention to agriculture and to the villages, because I think those are, those, some of those primary areas that identify and make Suffolk a unique place, and I think that the idea that we need to protect and preserve those and to promote them is wonderful, so thank you so much for that. I have just, I have three or four questions. So the new reduction in the growth area, you said it's about 46% of the original five area proposals.
Right.
And I know we had been kind of talking in percentages as a, like, what's the growth area, and I know the original proposal was like 22%, 23%, and then the second scale down was about 17%. Do you have a percentage, what that 5,900 acres represents as far as an expansion of the existing growth areas as a percentage?
We could generate that number.
Can you? Yeah, I would just like to know that number, because like, I've been thinking in terms of, you know, we were at 22 now, then we were at 17, and now what are we at? Because I know that what was presented was, you know, the typical expansion of the growth areas maybe somewhere around 5%, and I think we're clearly higher than that, but I just would like to know kind of what that is. So I feel like I'm not comparing apples to apples, so I would appreciate that. My second question, you've talked about the zoning in the village areas of, you know, the B2, B1, commercial, so on and so forth. Is there a, is there a thought process that maybe that B1 neighborhood commercial is kind of what would be most appropriate for those village areas? Is that, am I, is that, is that what I heard? I feel like that's...
I think it's a good starting point, because they're clearly different.
Right, right.
By design.
And maybe not, maybe not exclusively B1, but...
Right.
Maybe that's kind of what seems to be the best fit. Okay, that's what I felt like I heard, but I just wanted to hear that. Next question is, on the employment center, that, I really appreciate the description of that and what all that means and how much of it is already actually kind of built out, but is there underlying zoning that goes with these employment centers that will dictate, you know, like we had the M1, M2, you know, whatever, or is that employment center, is that the new zoning? And I'm, that, I feel like that's a dumb question, but...
No, no, it's a very good question and something we really want to make sure we're clear about, and there's zoning, and then there's the land use plan, and they're different.
Okay.
And one guides the other, but changing the land use designation, which this would do in that case, in the expanded growth area, changes the policy for that piece of property, but it does not change the zoning.
Okay.
The zoning stays the same.
So if it says employment center, it doesn't automatically mean it's zoned and industrial?
Does not, does not change the zoning at all. It affects the decisions that the staff, Planning Commission, and council would make if that came forward, and I think that's why the illustrations were so helpful.
Right.
You know, because we've done this before around the city. Previous councils have done this, and I think we've all benefited from that.
Right.
But you've got to start with, or at least is to your benefit to start with, a land use designation that indicates to investors and the community what you're thinking about for this property going forward. It makes it easier for you to get there, both in terms of infrastructure investment and getting the kind of private investment that you're looking for.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, thank you. And my last, this is just a comment, because I, I don't think there's any secret how I feel about solar, I don't think that's, I don't think anyone has to wonder, but we have that in there as a... But we have that in there as a new market. And I know that it's different because we, there were not utility-scale solar or really any solar facilities the last time this was looked at. And I know that we've been struggling with, you know, how do we bring that in? But but I guess my, looking at that, looking at the way that reads, with the current ordinance that we have in place and the cap that we have, so it's, it's a difference because it's something that wasn't available to us before, but, you know, I guess I don't really want to be encouraging to utility-scale solar.
Yeah.
So, but that was kind of the, that's kind of what that looked like to me in the new language, so.
Right. What we're going for here is a recognition that the market has changed. We didn't even need to have a conversation about this before.
Right, there's no such thing, right.
So that's a good place to start. We know that there are investors looking for this kind of property to make this kind of an investment.
Okay.
So start there. The city has also, as you know, recently, like a lot of other communities, updated how their zoning ordinances treat the stuff that's walking in the door today.
Absolutely.
Good move. We've done that with a lot of input from the planning commission and the community. That's in place. This language recognizes that this is still fairly new. The industry is new. It makes sense for us, we believe as a community, to keep our eyes on this. Is this change that we've made a good one for us going forward? I think we hear a lot, we continue to hear a lot, even at the most recent planning commission, of a lot of speculation, a lot of fears, maybe about about this kind of development. So we just want to keep our ears open and be open to, maybe we haven't gotten this perfect yet. Let's keep an eye on the projects that come through. Let's keep an eye on the state, what the state does, what the private industry does, because this may not be a settled issue right now.
Right.
That's kind of what we're going for here. Let's be aware, make it a priority, provide the resources to continue to track this.
Right. And so I appreciate the fact that we are addressing it because I feel like that, you know, kind of the beginning of this whole road that we've gone down is that, you know, nobody, this is an all-new world, and we weren't exactly sure how to accept it into the city. So, okay, I appreciate that explanation. And that is all my questions. I'll let somebody else have a turn. Thanks.
Councilman Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keith, I just want to echo what Councilman Fawcett and what Councilperson Butler-Barlow said. Thank you very much for the effort that you and your staff have put into this thing. I do have just a couple of general comments and then a couple of quick questions. Number one, I like Councilperson Butler-Barlow, I do appreciate the detailed explanation about the employment centers because when you do look at those maps and you do look at, particularly with the central growth, the number, the air, you know, the number of purple places that are in there, it does give you a little scary impression that we're going to all of a sudden just dot the whole place with with these warehouses. But the fact that they're already here, I think should hopefully put some hearts at ease. And then also appreciate you putting into perspective the relative size of the expansion of our growth areas with this particular plan versus the other three permutations of this plan that have come since, I guess, what, 1998? So thank you very much for that. And then I also want to go back, you know, to one of the things that you said in your initial slides. This is just a plan. This is not the Ten Commandments being delivered down to us. This will be a little bit of a living and a fluid document. And moving forward, depending on the project and depending on how people feel about it, it's either going to be used as a security blanket to wrap around the project, say this is exactly what our comprehensive plan says, or it's going to be used as a cudgel to beat a particular project up because it may be in not complete concert with the comprehensive plan. So, and we see that virtually every meeting with the land use things that come before. So just to be honest with you, it depends on your perspective of the particular project, whether the planning department are good guys or bad guys. I hope you guys have a lot of black hats and a lot of white hats because you have to change them pretty frequently. The other thing is, you know, I like the fact that this is a general plan because the rate of change in our society, I mean, it is constantly evolving and, more importantly, it's constantly accelerating. And as the slides that Deputy City Manager Hughes showed us with the growth of those warehouses and whatnot, that's only eight years. And if you look at the amount of increase in the square footage of those that has happened just simply in that eight years, I'm glad that this comprehensive plan that we've got moving forward does maintain a little bit of flexibility to be able to react to changes in the market and doesn't tie us down completely to what is happening now because what is happening now is clearly not going to be what's going to be happening, you know, even as 2030, 2028. I do have a couple of questions, and Kevin, if you don't mind coming back up to the podium. With all the warehouses that you did point out to us, I hear a lot of comments from folks that say, you're building these warehouses, but they're just sitting idle. We don't see anything going on with them. You know, why are we continuing to devote any kind of land use resources, economic development incentives and whatnot, to these warehouses when they're half vacant? So, I mean, can you speak a little bit to about the, where they are in terms of occupancy?
Yeah, so I keep up with the quarterly reports that come in from the industrial and commercial world. I think the last one that was published was Q1 2024. Suffolk, from a vacancy rate perspective, was listed at 4.6. A healthy, to give you context, a healthy market for vacancy is 5 to 10%. That allows for balance for both owner as well as leasing to negotiate a little bit. And so that's our current number.
Yeah, and I guess if you're at 100% occupancy, it's hard to attract people because you don't have any place to put them.
That's true.
So, all right, well, thank you for that. And then Paul, if you don't mind, I just have one quick question for you. And this is going back to the graph that you showed on the ERUs and their contribution to...
Correct.
...your ability to be able to fund things. Do you know right off the top of your head, like going back the last couple of years, what the actual ERU number has been? Because I think that's probably a more accurate number for how housing development is occurring as opposed to the pipeline figures and whatnot that we sometimes have to work with.
Right. Going on memory here, the last fiscal year was, we budgeted 550. We made that the year before. That was also 550, and I believe we were just a little bit shy of that, like up in the upper 400s.
Okay, so it's been fairly stable.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for that. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm all done.
Councilman Johnson.
And I'm going to be very brief, too. Keith, first, I want to start by saying that this was an excellent presentation tonight. You took the numbers that you've changed, and I was able to follow everything very well, and I appreciate it. I think you guys have done a tremendous job with listening to the public and listening and taking this thing forward, and tonight was well-received from my part. Two things, though, that, you know, number one, I have to go back to Councilwoman Barlow on the on the solar. Does it, when we actually put in the plan that we are promoting solar, are we promoting solar? I have a real, because we're hearing everywhere in the city, and we've been hearing this, that people really don't want it. I mean, it's an investment opportunity for some people, but do we want to encourage that investment opportunity if that's not how we want our city to look? Just questioning it. I appreciate the fact that we're exploring it and making, putting it forth, but just because the state mandates it, does that mean we have to go get on board? I'm not sure.
No, this plan does not support solar. It simply reacts to solar, utility-scale solar in the market.
Right.
And to the ordinance amendments that we've already made and recognizes that this is an evolving situation.
Right.
You know, let's keep an eye on it, partly because solar is important, but it's also raising serious community challenges. So keep an eye on it.
But it came about later. It wasn't in the original one. It came back in the next phase, right? I mean, it is something we just added. I just recently read it. I didn't see it before.
Yeah, I think we've been pretty consistent on that.
Has it?
Yes. We started coordinated early on because we hadn't made the ordinance changes yet.
Cool.
So I was working closely with staff on that. But of course, that's been done, but we came away from it saying, this is a good change, obviously, but let's keep an eye on this.
Okay.
Even just looking at the potential for the state to become involved, just one issue of a dozen issues that could really change the climate for this.
I can appreciate that. Then the other thing that came to mind on page 79 kind of blew me away because it's my borough, and all of a sudden you've taken up my whole borough here, it seems like, with what the state on the LIHTCs, where we, the state, I mean, the federal government says, well, this is a good area to put low-income housing or to put, put housing for the, you know. It really concerns me. I've never seen this before.
Okay.
And it just showed up. Was it in the 2035 plan?
If it's what I think it is, it's been in there since the beginning, but let me take a closer look at it and...
I went back and looked. I couldn't find it anywhere. My concern is that when you look at...
The economic development section, is that right?
Pardon me?
Is that the economic development section?
Well, is it? Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Economic development, page 79. I've had a lot of calls on it.
We'll take a close look at it.
I just want to make sure that this is some, the problem is when you put it in writing, it's in writing. Everybody sees it, and they all go, well, maybe this is where the city of Suffolk wants to encourage housing. It's not in the rural area of our city. I don't think that's so.
No, I think context is important here. So it did not exist, that map did not exist in 2035 in the plan. We actually didn't have an economic development chapter before. I'm not sure we've had it in any plans. These are some of the things that we wanted to talk about in the, in the plan that we saw as a shortcoming related to the map. I think it identifies three or four federally recognized incentives, so to speak.
Correct.
They're very specific. And so it talks about low-income tax, it talks about opportunity zones, and I think it talks about new market tax credits. And it's all driven by population and demographics. And so those maps, those programs are all federally designated and recognized based upon demographics. And so we put that map in the program. Whether or not it goes there, the reality is, there's probably a good chance that there's somebody using some of those programs in your borough, in your district today, probably in all of yours, to be honest. And so I think it has a connotation that needs a lot of education. It's not necessarily a bad thing. Low-income projects are ones that this council has approved on Portwood Boulevard and other locations, Hill Point, et cetera. But it really just talks about a program. It identifies a program. If this body takes action on it, that's a separate action that would include a rezoning or things of that nature. It's not necessarily always large-scale, hundreds of units. It can be one resident at a time.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that at all. As a matter of fact, we need low-income housing all over the city, but it needs to be spread all over the city so everybody, that's the right way to do it. But just review this, if you don't mind, for me, look at it, because to me, it just slapped me in the face like, whoa.
Does that, that exist today? So if you pull up the federal government's program, that's where it is.
Hmm. Now, I don't, I wonder if it's something we want to promote, though.
It's promoting, it's being promoted, whether you like it or not, at the federal level and on those websites.
Okay.
And again, it can be a very positive thing, considering what housing prices are these days.
It can be.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, and with that, I will, oh, the master plan for transportation and the village concept, keep on. I mean, I'm excited, the fact that we're going to cover all of that soon, but that is still something of paramount support, I mean, paramount importance to our city in my perspective. And sooner than later, I guess, is how we're going to jump on that one. But the master plan and the village concept, how we're going to treat the villages, because it's not quite done yet. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Warren.
Keith, I want to ask you a question. I might have two, but I'll ask this one here. The historic village, what determined that? I mean, what had, how you determine? I cannot believe, or I don't understand why Pewsville or Huntersville, one of the oldest villages around, when in Nazman County, I think, I wasn't here, why they not consider that at all?
You know, we took the feedback that we got from the community and the sources that have mapped those villages in the past, but there's, there's really no reason why other villages can't be identified. I mean, this is really just sort of acknowledging that the residents of Suffolk view this area, this historic village, as important. It's just a starting point to acknowledge that and to go forward.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm open to identifying what the community thinks there's, because all, it's not, it's not changing the zoning, it's not putting a land use designation, it's just acknowledging these historic areas in the, in the community that are important to folks in the community.
Okay. I'm just saying this because knowing that I have the greatest memory, but I recall that in conversation before I got on council and went a time, they was considered a village, that was a, Pewsville, Huntersville were considered a village. When they talk about villages, that they was included before, back in, during them times. So I'm saying to you, you, 1800, they had, Pewsville and Huntersville almost was there, just like all the other villages I'm looking at. They have a history. I mean, it was Nazman County, I wasn't living here, but still, they got stories and just like, oh, they have story. They have, I mean, I don't understand why they not consider village. I mean, I just can't get that in my mind. I want to know what is the qualification for that, who picked that? I don't know that. I mean, I...
Well, again, I think that's something that we should continue to think about and perhaps consider changing.
Yeah, I hope we do think about it because...
We're using the data and the input from...
Because I don't see no difference. What it was, I see comparisons.
Yeah.
I mean, I remember all of them had outhouses, okay? Pewsville, Huntersville, Hobson, and all, I mean, they went through the same thing everybody else went through, and they're not considered a village. I don't know if they get more not being a village or getting a village. I want the same thing go for Pewsville and Huntersville, especially Pewsville, they got enough houses out there. They got dirt roads, they got paper squeaks, they got everybody else, they got the same thing. So I want to see what, you know, because they don't participate in squeaky wheel, still, we know the history of these communities. I just don't see how they not consider a village. And I'd have heard them was recognized as a village years ago. They considered them a village. So I don't know where the numbers broke down at and like that. And one more question I want to ask. You said a 460 was going to Alawite or something, you reduced it. What, what happened? What made you reduce it 49%? I mean, what?
The feedback that we were getting from the community, that, that the, the growth area expansion that the earlier drafts proposed was taking in too much, too much land. You know, I think the, the idea was to look at ways to reduce it. That's one that made a lot of sense. It still works very much for the, for the city, but it gets closer to those other comparisons that, that we've made in terms of earlier extensions of the growth area boundary. So we think we've landed on something that is in the middle and is acceptable to more residents.
So the feedback had a lot to do with it?
Yes.
So less feedback with Pewsville, Huntersville had a lot, might have a lot to do with it not consider village?
I just have to be honest, Mr. Warren, this is the first I've heard of it. So again, that's, that's why we have these conversations and, and make these, make these recommendations.
By reducing it, do that change the growth zone or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
Do that change the growth zone by reducing it? No?
By designating those village areas?
By reducing 460, do that change the growth zone?
It did. It did reduce the size of that area that was proposed in that corridor.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Bennett.
Just a couple of comments. I do appreciate the presentation, and I don't want to go back over everything my fellow council members have said because I agree with all the comments that has been made. So rather than go back and repeat all that has been said, I just say it's a great presentation. It's a lot there, but I will say this is that back when we did the UDO, this just gave us a guide to go by, and it was changed. It was many times during the years, council saw need. So I think we are looking at 2045 at the same way. It's a guide that we'll be using for the future, and it can be amended at any time in request of council. Am I correct?
Yeah, it's a great example. I think zoning ordinances get old, too. We're talking about all the changes we're seeing in the market. Your zoning ordinance needs to keep up with those changes or new information that comes forward that you didn't have when you adopted that document. So it does... So it does take time and and resources to keep those ordinances up to date, but absolutely they need to be kept up to date.
Right. And I would also like to say that Robert, Mr. Lewis, comments that you made about transportation, I think people need to hear that more because they think that, you know, transportation is, we all know it's a problem, but it come with the growth and if you try to span it as a growth, but there's a process of getting the funds in order to, to expand the transportation. So I think you explained that very well to the public where they will understand the sources and the means of the transportation and what we need to do to try and move that forward. On the, I'm glad we talked more about the solar farms and warehouses because I've had a lot of conversation with a lot of my constituents and not only my constituents, but others within the city about those items and I'm glad that we are addressing those. And I think the other question that has been asked about the solar farms, I totally agree that we need to have some way of sort of managing the numbers where they are going and whatnot, just not popping up all over the city in the neighborhood. So I do appreciate all your hard work and Gary, your work has never finished, it looks like, but you're really getting there with all your good stuff that you're getting done and we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll wrap it up as quick as I can. I'll probably cut some of these comments back or we'll be ready for a meeting before we quit. But anyhow, to start with, I mean, this has been a very, very, I was watching a planning commission meeting and Chairman Singleton, I think, has been at this longer than I have, maybe as long as Councilman Bennett. He said he's never seen anything that there has been this much time and resources and citizen engagement as this process. And I agree with that wholeheartedly because, yeah, I think we, contrary to what some people think, I mean, I think we have done an exceptional job in the last two years. You've done an exceptional job. The staff has done an exceptional job and I think everybody ought to have this, you know, presentations, a lot of these presentations committed to memory by now. This particular presentation, I also watched when the planning commission, and this was just a step above what's normally a good presentation. I feel like you listened to all the comments and took into account all the comments that were made during the joint meeting along with citizen comments and I think we addressed them all from my standpoint. It looked to me like they were addressed, some particular ones maybe more so than other, but I don't think anyone skirted around an issue. There has been some conversation as to timing, whether we want to have a public hearing and actually, you know, and vote in August, but I think that's something we can look at in August, that's a month plus out. There has been some requests to me in regards to the amended plan, whether we could possibly, on the website, maybe redline what the changes that were made. And that is very helpful. I'm going through a very, very, very lengthy legal negotiation with someone and I mean, there's a format that that makes it rather easy where you can take it, redline it, put the changes in it and it will allow the citizens to go to it. So if we could do that, that would, I think that would maybe put some people at ease or at least feel like they don't have to hunt for whatever changes, even though you did state on particular pages, there were some changes. But even that way, we could put the smaller ones. In regards to the plan itself, I mean, once again, this is a plan. I mean, it's a plan, you know, it's hard to plan for anything sometimes 12 months from now, nevertheless, five, 10, 15, or 20 years from now because of changing markets. And changing markets and changing economic circumstances is what has propelled, you know, the propensity for warehouses and traffic. There's been two things, you know, Port 460 did two things. It generated truck traffic, whether you like it or not, we own two or three major arteries going out of Hampton Road. So we're going to get the traffic that the Port of Virginia is generating with or without anything. Along with the Port of Virginia generating traffic, they also created the demand for the warehouse space at the same time. Increased commerce with the port means that there's a demand for warehousing. So when you look at the slides that Mr. Hughes showed us, you know, from 2016 to 2000 now, was created by that demand. Along with the demand that was created was the low interest rates. I mean, you had historically low interest rates, which was an incentive for companies to invest at that time because the rates were low. So you had high demand, low interest rates, and the same thing happened as far as housing was concerned. The vast majority of housing that's been created in the last half a dozen years or so has not been through rezoning. They have been projects that have been zoned, have been on the books, but when you can finance a house at 2.9%, it puts a little, a few more people in the market. So the thought process that this is going to continue in the same direction is not based on reality. That's not going to be the case. When you look at the warehouse space that's built out, and another thing that personally I would like to see, especially on the 58 corridor, because I know we've cut that back twice, and I think it's worth looking at, at least expanding it to Loomis Road, which is not very far, and we already have a manufacturing zoning designation, if I'm not mistaken, on Loomis Road on the corner. And when we take into consideration the wetlands, which I would like to see some type of delineation on the map that shows how much of this property, you know, we can look at it in a map and you see this big green piece of property, but if 40% can't be utilized because it's wetlands, then the reality of it is that's not going to be usable land. So that's something else I wanted to bring up. The employment centers, this is my thought process, it says secondary use, compatible, adaptive reuse of existing employment center buildings. My question is, why does it have to be reused? Can't we just allow for non-employment center uses that are compatible with adjacent uses, building characteristics, site design and facility location? Take out the word reuse. Because what we're doing is we're saying, to me, it says, if we have a building there and you want to reuse it for that purpose, you can, but you can't put a new one there, which doesn't, I don't know, it just doesn't sound rational to me. It's a use that we're talking about. And a lot of these things, going back to Councilmember Butler Barlow's question in regards to, you know, when we do these growth centers, does that mean you get to do it? No, it doesn't. You know, basically what, to me, I kind of consider them as a variation of a conditional use permit in that those designated areas are something that we're kind of looking for a lot, maybe looking for a little bit, and you can kind of do it if it makes sense. And that's what a conditional use permit. It doesn't prohibit you from doing it, but if it makes sense at that time, then, you know, we can make that allowance. But there's no rezoning going on and I think a lot of folks are looking at it as a rezoning. If it's there, we need to do it. As far as the solar farms are concerned, I know nobody's crazy about them and everybody has their own opinion about it. But if you look back at some of the legislation that was presented just this last time, it didn't pass, there was going to be a state mandate that the locality provide for 4% of the total land mass. To put that into perspective, it's probably eight to 10 times what we have right now at 1%. So in the event that that happens, let's say next year they say, hey, that was a great idea. Guess what? Everybody by law has to allow for 4% of their total land mass to be used for solar. Well, we need to have a plan, is where are we going to put it? So if it's in the comp plan that this could be a suitable location for solar, then in the event it's a mandate, then we know, we don't have to start scrambling around, oh my goodness, we have to come up with another 5,000 acres of solar, where are we going to put it? We will already have that part of it done. So I have no issue with that at all. When we talk about coming up with a plan for solar, the numbers are pretty impressive as far as, when you take ag land, conservation land and put parks and open space with it, it's 82% of our land mass? I mean, that's, I mean, that's, anyhow, I knew it was a lie, but that is, that is a lie to say we get 82% in ag, conservation and in in parks. And other than that, I think those are my comments. Once again, I want to thank you and thank everybody who's been working on this, you know, the time and effort, the due diligence, and I've been to so many meetings, the information that's out there has been accurate information. It's been right on point. I don't think, there's one thing, I don't think anyone has contacted me and said so-and-so wouldn't talk to me or I couldn't get information. So once again, I want to thank you very much and I guess we'll be taking a look at it in August. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just quickly respond. I should have included this in the presentation, but we're working now on a document that will show the changes.
Okay.
You mentioned the redline version, the track changes. We're working on that now and we'll have that as soon as we can wrap it up and
Yeah, take a look at the employment centers too, rather than the reuse.
Yes.
I think it should be in there. If the use makes sense, I don't care if it goes in an old building or they want to build a new one.
We'll do that.
And that'll open it up a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our work session. We have no need for a motion for a closed session this evening, so this meeting is now adjourned and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.